So, um, welcome to a public information hearing. I'm Peter Gaglin, town manager, our select board. Bob Gargano, Judy Lamall, Mike Waddell. We're lucky enough to have Eric Renier here today. As you might know, we have several sidewalk projects going on in town. This is not the Lancaster Road sidewalk project. So if you're here for that, or you want to know about that, reach out to Eric or I, but that's not what tonight's about. Tonight is about a pedestrian improvement project, which may include sidewalks. And this will be, uh, right now in the engineering phase. So part of that is, with any federal funding, we would have public hearings, record them, and get feedback from, uh, folks that are out there. So these are all... Well, thank you, Ross. It's good, man. It's good, yeah. Yeah, I know, I figured it out. Better than my cat. Even though I'm over 50. Thank, I'm over it, thank you. This is good. We have, oh gosh. Basically, Route 16 to Route 2 is the scope of this. So we're not talking Main Street, uh, you know, out past, you know, VIP or all that, or Main Street going down to Bangor Street or the golf course. It's from Route 16 over, we'll see maps of that. And again, it's very important, present some ideas. Nothing has been finalized. That's why we're all here, is to talk about ideas and get the best project for our community that we can. Um, with that, I will hand this over to Eric and let him give a presentation, and we'll go from there.
Sounds great. So, as Peter mentioned, my name is Eric Renier, Senior Civil Engineer with HEB Engineers. Uh, with me tonight is Katie Gillette. She's gonna help me, uh, record the, record the meeting and take notes. But, uh, so that's, that's the project team. As Peter mentioned, here we're for the Main Street Pedestrian Improvement Project. It is a federally funded project, um, in the community. So as we kind of go through some of this early, um, some of these early slides, I may refer to acronyms, uh, just based on habit. But if I say, you know, some of these acronyms, FHWA refers to Federal Highway Administration, NHDOT, uh, New Hampshire Department of Transportation, CDS, Congressional Directed Spending, that is where the funding is coming from for this project, through Senator Shaheen's office. And LPA, Local Public Agency, that is the process that we are required, um, as engineers and sponsors of the project. That is the process that we're required to follow, throughout the life of the project, from early design through construction. It's a better, it's a very heavily regulated process. Um, there are many, uh, levels of review along the way, through NHDOT, um, and at the sponsorship level, and all the way up through Federal Highway. So this project has a lot of eyes on it throughout, um, you know, throughout its life. So just to get to some project background information, NHDOT is the entity that's administering a project for this. All the reviews and the plans and things of that nature will be administered through NHDOT's office. Uh, so they're gonna play a major role in the project moving forward. So as I mentioned, this project has Congressional Directed Spending, and it's 90% federally funded, with the municipality sharing 10% of the cost. So it's a 90% funded project, with municipality carrying 10% of the cost share. Uh, as I mentioned, the funding requires the town to follow a very regulated process, uh, which is the LPA process, the Local Public Agency. Uh, it's a manual about this thing that is given to us as engineers, with all the rules and requirements that we have to follow, um, along the way. Uh, as I mentioned, each phase of the project gets a review. Uh, right now, we are in engineering study level phase of the project, so we're very early, um, in the preliminary phases, where, um, you know, we're gathering information from project stakeholders like yourselves, and as Peter mentioned, trying to get the best project that meets the needs of the community. Um, when we hit the construction phase, which we'll touch on briefly towards the end of the presentation, there's a whole set of federal labor compliance, um, requirements that we require to follow because we've accepted, or because the community has accepted the federal funding, essentially having to play by the rules, and there are a lot of rules to follow. So to give you a brief overview of the project area as it was scoped, essentially, it goes from the Gorham Town Common intersection with Route 16, northerly towards the US Route 2 intersection. So based on the RFQ, uh, which is a request for qualifications from engineers, the project area has essentially been defined as the, uh, Main Street corridor through the community. There are a couple of different landmarks on the map that try to help orient, um, orient where you are throughout the project. You know, on the south end, there's the Gorham Town Common. You have a few different, uh, schools in the project vicinity. Uh, northerly is the EMS, and there are a lot of businesses, uh, you know, throughout and residences throughout the length of the project. Uh, but this is, we talked about the project area, this is the core, um, project area as it was defined in the green application. So I touched on a little bit of this, but project background. The town receives, uh, $1.6 million in earmark for pedestrian improvements along Main Street. That earmark, uh, comes through Congressional Directed Spending, through Senator Shaheen's office, which was, I believe, approved in 23, 22, 23?
It came through, it came through in 23.
Came through, came through in 2023. So because it's, it's, uh, federal, you know, federal dollars at play, we have, we have to follow the, the rules. Uh, as I mentioned, the earmark is a 90-10 split, with the town's responsibility of 10% of eligible project costs. And when I say eligible project costs, that are things like engineering, construction, permitting, a lot of different things get wrapped up into that $1.6 million, that's been approved for the project. So as Peter mentioned, there are several different, let's say, town-wide pedestrian projects kind of going on at the same time. We have this project for the Main Street project, but we also have the pedestrian improvement project, uh, on Lancaster Road, um, which is tied together in sort of a vision, but separate from this project. And as I mentioned there, we're, we're supposed to follow the, the regulated process. So where are we now in the process? We're very early on in the process. So the town issued a request for qualifications, um, to select engineers, uh, back in October of 2024, and HEB was fortunate enough to get selected to do the engineering design for the project. Uh, we are, as I mentioned, we're early on in the project phase. We are coordinating and proceeding with, um, engineering study. So we're, you know, coordinating existing features, things like right-of-way, where the right-of-way path's gonna be, if there are any, uh, you know, wetlands, all of the, all of the project background data we are collecting, um, uh, as part of the engineering study phase. You may have seen us out there this spring and summer. We've completed the corridor survey. Once snow melted, our surveyors were out there, April, May timeframe, doing a lot of the boundary work, picking up existing features along the project corridor. Uh, but that was completed, uh, spring and summer of this year. And the next phase of this project, based on your feedback that we gathered tonight, um, and moving forward, is we're gonna develop sort of layout alternatives, uh, for the town to consider for this project moving forward. So when we go through these initial, uh, public input sessions, you know, you may think, jeez, it's, you know, there's nothing to present, uh, or there's no, you know, there's no design drawings, or, you know, where my property impacts mainly. Those will come at another public meeting as we move down the road, after we gather your feedback. We take the budget, we take, uh, alternatives, and come up with several different things for consideration. But we'll be back, uh, you know, to present those alternatives. Tonight's intent is to sort of gather your feedback, gather your concerns, um, what you'd like to see incorporated into the project or not incorporated into the project. But that's sort of the purpose of tonight's meeting and this, this initial, uh, feedback gathering session moving forward. So just a summary of some of the existing conditions that we have to consider for the project. Pedestrian crossings, there are a lot of pedestrian crossings, um, in the corridor. Uh, it's a very busy, uh, busy area. And as we proceed with engineering study and design, pedestrian crossings are gonna be an important consideration that we will need to, uh, take into account as we move forward with our alternatives. Uh, you know, safe crossing locations, it may be relocating some crosswalks, eliminating some crosswalks, uh, improving existing crosswalks, making them more visible. But crossing, uh, US 2, Route 16, uh, is, is gonna be a consideration moving forward for this project. Existing sidewalk conditions? Uh, you know, the existing sidewalk is in need of repair. Uh, you know, as part of a pedestrian project, pedestrian improvement project, we want to make sure that, uh, pedestrian facilities are in good condition, you know, when we're done with them. So part of the project, you know, the existing sidewalk will be considered moving forward. With alternatives will be considered, you know, depending on where the right-of-way is and what area we have available. For construction and improvements will be, uh, you know, will be important as we start developing these layouts, uh, early on in the project. We have some challenges, we have some retaining walls, we have, uh, fences, we have trees to consider. On-street parking, uh, there's a significant amount of on-street parking throughout the corridor. Uh, you know, so we have to take that into account when we look at layout, um, you know, and those impacts to that on-street parking, uh, you know, for local businesses is, is gonna be important. The town is gonna be responsible for maintaining the project when it's done, similar to what, what they do now. Uh, but what we leave, when we're done with it, we want to make sure it's durable, it's maintainable, uh, you know, and allows the town to proceed in a fashion that, that is not interference moving forward. Safety, uh, very important, uh, consideration. There are many side street intersections, uh, as I mentioned, pedestrian crossings. Uh, we have, you know, ADA accessibility accommodations that we have to make as part of the project. That includes things like sidewalk slopes. Uh, making sure that, here you can see when the roadway project went through a few years ago, they came and they had to update, um, a lot of the tip-downs for, for ADA accessibility. Uh, so we have, you know, intersections, we have a lot of driveway crossings. Anything that we improve as part of this project has to be accessible, uh, when we're done with it. Uh, so accessibility, uh, you know, is a major consideration for this project moving forward, as there are a lot of challenges, uh, you know, with a, with a project corridor of this length. Utilities, we have a lot of utilities here. We have things to consider for drainage, um, water sewer, and utility poles. There are utility poles, you know, immediately adjacent to a lot of our, a lot of your existing pedestrian facilities. Watered sewer, you know, all the services are gonna be under the sidewalk. Uh, you know, there are water shut-offs along the project length. You know, there are a lot of things that are below the ground that we may not consider to be important to the project, but we want to make sure that, you know, those things are incorporated, uh, to the project when we're in there, you know, excavating, uh, and making improvements. That, you know, those things are considered, uh, as part of the project. Drainage, there are a lot of areas where the existing roadways lack, uh, you know, so relief points are pretty limited throughout the, the length of the corridor. Uh, this includes situations where you have a sidewalk crossing a driveway, and you have, you know, ponding and puddling in those areas, and situations where, uh, the pavement might not be in the best condition while people are walking along those locations or those areas. We need to consider draining and what impact that's gonna have, um, to the, to the pedestrian facility moving forward. Schools, very important. Uh, there are two schools in the project area, the Gorham Middle High School and Ed Fen Elementary. You know, two very heavily utilized areas. And there are, there is an existing crossing at the Gorham Middle High School. So I believe, you know, considering improvements to that crosswalk, whether it's slightly relocating it or making improvements to the visibility, uh, is gonna be, uh, you know, we're gonna have to consider that, uh, crossings as part of the project. And we have, um, you had Fen Elementary School. Uh, there was a safety school project that I was involved with, got 10, 12 years ago, where the sidewalk was constructed along the driveway leading to the school. Uh, you know, very heavily utilized pedestrian corridor. And the two schools are gonna be, uh, vital, uh, components to the project. You know, local businesses, there are a lot of businesses along the corridor, um, that are all accessible, you know, by pedestrians. Uh, you know, what impacts are these improvements gonna have to the businesses, not only through design, but also through construction? Right? The businesses have to stay open during construction. How are we gonna accommodate that? Uh, how are we gonna continue to provide pedestrian access to these locations while, let's say, the sidewalk is getting reconstructed? Uh, you know, so impacts to local businesses, uh, you know, is one of the major considerations for this project. You know, what are we gonna, how are we gonna tie into these businesses? Uh, you know, we, we do have some challenges where some of the existing sidewalks create some interesting, uh, dynamics with the sidewalk. You know, how, how is that accessible? You know, how are we gonna make, you know, some of these areas accessible if they're not accessible? So we do have, um, local businesses as what we're considering, um, a major project considering as moving forward. My, my presentation tonight is rather short because, like I said, we are in the study phase. But here's sort of a shot at the proposed project schedule. As I mentioned, these projects are heavily regulated. There are a lot of different reviews that happen, whether it's environmental reviews, uh, reviews at NHDOT, whether it be Federal Highway. Uh, so we do our best to sort of, early on, protect what we believe the, uh, project schedule to be. But moving out, the project agreement execution that was completed, uh, earlier this year. As I mentioned, we're currently in the engineering study phase. We are hoping to be wrapped up, uh, you know, in the fall of 2025. One of the important things with this CDS funding strictly is it has a tightened timeline. So that money needs to be what they consider encumbered, which means you have to engineer the project, put it out to bid for contract or construction, and have those numbers, uh, in hand and ready to sign a construction contract. Uh, this funding has an expiration for that of fall 2027. So we have, it might seem like it's a ways out, but when you consider, uh, from an engineering standpoint, you know, all the environmental views, the right-of-way, the engineering, the, the DOT reviews, you know, it's, it's gonna be, uh, a timeline that we can't miss, uh, otherwise those funds will expire. But we anticipate bidding in fall of '27, and then construction to start the, the spring thereafter. Design and permitting, uh, I should've said fall. Yeah, yeah, I should've said fall, uh, winter 2026, or early winter 2027. You know, early winters, like January, February '27. Uh, and then bidding, uh, fall '27. So it is a compressed schedule, and that is due to the requirements for the CDS funding, uh, meeting those, you know, project schedules. So as we proceed with developing alternatives, not only do we have to consider, you know, the cost of the project, we also have to consider, you know, how easy is it gonna be to permit this project? Or, you know, how easy is it gonna be to implement this project? How many right-of-way impacts do we have as part of this project? Uh, because right-of-way is a significant piece of this, when you think about project scheduling, because there is a whole regulated process where if you go outside of the right-of-way, there is a long process, um, that you have to follow, with, you know, with each individual property owner. So, uh, you know, all of those things get considered as part of the preferred alternative that we release as, as sort of the, the project that, that gets on the books. Uh, all of these things come into play, particularly the, the project schedule. Uh, you know, as I mentioned, that's sort of where we're at, just with the project. This is sort of the, uh, the public input session where we introduce the project. Uh, we don't have, um, engineered layouts yet. Uh, those will be coming, um, this fall. So, you know, we can plan for that probably in the next few months, uh, where we will be back, based on your feedback, to release or to discuss, uh, several alternatives for the project to solicit sort of a second round of feedback, um, moving forward. And then we'll proceed with developing preferred alternatives that get submitted, uh, to DOT for, uh, review and approval, and that will be the basis of our project moving forward. So with that, that's all that I have. But, you know, we're, obviously, we want to get questions, feedback, thoughts, uh, for the project, considerations, anything that you might have that, um, you know, can help us frame, frame the project, you know, moving forward.
There's a large section that probably doesn't have sidewalk on the north side. Is that gonna stay no sidewalk? Or does that have putting sidewalk in there or one of them?
Are you talking, like, where the cemetery is?
From, yeah, from the ashtrays down to the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, we don't have an alternative for that yet, but I guess what I'm hearing is that, uh, there's a desire for a sidewalk there?
It's probably not gonna be usable, but...
Yeah, I mean, it depends on what we have available for right-of-way. Uh, you know, cost will, will be a factor. This is sort of a set, uh, you know, a set amount of money. So whatever we, you know, present as sort of a preferred alternate, you know, once we consider, you know, lighting, safety improvements, sort of developing what is the priority for the project? If that second, you know, adding sidewalk to that second, if that's a priority that, um, you know, comes out with this process, you know, that will be considered.
But as Al just mentioned, Eric and I and the board, we talk all the time, and it's, you know, not about making a perfect situation, but making it better with limited funds. You know, this was kind of 2022, 2023 money, and you probably know this, things have gotten more expensive. This budget, there are some grants that kind of expand over time. They have built-in escalators. This kind of stuff doesn't. So we're always worried about the time constraints and money constraints and best value. If you think of that section, I, I don't think making Main Street narrower would, would be safe necessarily and take away parking. So that means if you're putting in sidewalks, it is, it could be. And again, if we get feedback, um, you know, the board listens to it, I listen to it, Eric listens to it, we could consider it and then put it out there. We do have this limited amount of money. Nothing that the community could say, we really want that. You know, I want a zip line that runs from the shaws to, and, and we'll pay for it. You know, let's have a Warren article that we would entertain.
The hydro, you love that? Simple.
You know?
There you go.
You know, the kids love it.
Have you ever, this already went through, like, previously as far as the funding?
The funding was secured, yep. Senator Shaheen fought hard, as you know, and the federal government, last several years, it's been difficult. So she fought hard to get this, um, and it, and the money, it took a little longer for it to come through. So this is guaranteed money, but it, but it can expand, unfortunately.
Right, okay. And the town, has the town already talked about it? And approved the general budget, like, the previous...
Yeah, our 10%, which is a really good number. I wish, I wish all of our grants were 10%.
Right, no, sure.
So we do have money, we just talked about our, um, road capital reserve type funds. So there is money for this that has been allocated. So we aren't gonna come to you as taxpayers and say, we're gonna need an extra $160,000.
Right, okay. And I have some questions for you.
Sure.
So, or maybe suggestions as well.
Yeah.
I know, more in quotes. So the first question is, I've kind of heard, like, about the pedestrian bike project. Is this not a bike? Like, there's no intention of making, like, private passing or anything?
So biking, we have, um, we have talked about, and I guess, you know, maybe that, that brings, you know, brings it up. We have on-street parking, um, through the area. And, you know, I think we could develop some alternatives that include bike lanes or something through this area, you know, through, through Main Street. Uh, but what is that sort of offset for, you know, available parking? Um, cause it really, you need like five feet to really feel, you really feel safe?
I think they're actually looking at the biking as a key. Not impossible, but it would be...
It, it makes the corridor very narrow. And it does, let's say, you know, a lot of, a lot of those bike facilities are adjacent to curb, you know, curb sidewalks. That would essentially be, you know, just looking at this picture, right through where that truck is parked. I mean, there are other options where we could do shared use, which would be in the road. But I know that, you know, me being a dad and I wouldn't put my kid in the road. Uh, you know, so there are alternatives to consider, but it will, I think, come with some things that will have to offset that throughout the corridor. And, you know, it's what, what's the priority? If, if getting, you know, bicycle, a bicycle lane through this corridor is the priority, well, maybe, you know, you'd have to lose one side of on-street parking to do that. Or, um, you know, so it just becomes an offset, I guess.
Yeah, I, I've heard that it would be a bike thing. And I'm like, I don't know, you know, possible, but kind of concern. Because like you said, it would just eat away the, of course, you have property, so...
Yeah.
Another thing is, you know, I don't know, like, manufacturing or like, how much of things on here? And obviously with, um, you know, more people who are coming through, the congestion, a lot of people are now, like, going to the right, other vehicles pass. the congestion's a lot, and people are now, like, going to the right other vehicles to pass. And that, as far as the pedestrian goes, it's very dangerous. And I've seen so many situations where, like, you know, hold your breath. Um, so, like, in a lot of those areas where they're turning is, um, kind of the other business and, you know, like, you know, before the schools, I guess, if they're coming from, to have that intersection down.
Yeah.
And currently, there, there is no parking on either side, and people are passing. Um, but I don't know if it's possible, I know this is probably fully different, but if you put center lanes in, in that area, that part of the corridor, so it can be actual, um, people can go in center lane to turn versus going around people, then I think it's safer. Like, I mean, I'm not an engineer.
Yeah, I mean, there are also things to consider, like widened grass islands, like working from the sidewalk side and sort of taking away that shoulder, that's not parking.
Right.
Um, so if you had, I don't have a photo of there, I know exactly where you're talking. But if you have a widened, you know, widened island that then leaves, you know, a white line in four feet, there's not a ton of room for it.
Right.
Uh, you know, you probably consider those in the no parking areas.
Yeah.
Uh, because, you know, obviously, if there's people parked there, you can't go around them, but.
Right.
I know that I, near McDonald's was, was one that I almost got the other day. I drive here, I, I live in Milan, so I drive through here twice a day.
Right.
Um, and that's one, that's one area that, you know, even if you're driving, somebody might pop out and run at you.
Yeah, there's, it's not a problem.
Yeah.
Even in town, while trying to calm, they still try to do it, and I'm just like, you know, all it takes is that a child and I, you know, they don't stop, like, they see someone stop and they just automatically, automatically count.
Yeah.
And someone's, you know, trying to cross the road right there, and, you know, and it's.
Yeah.
So, um, the other, uh, but that's what they consider as part of, you know, maybe finding solutions that are one way or another. Uh, that would be amazing. Um, another thing is, um, actually with by that intersection in front of sixteen, too, and.
Yeah.
Currently just have the one crossing that goes, um, from the living house to the common, and then running the coming farm's over, so there's nine actually going across the other way. From the coming farm side to the coming side, and then from the other corner to the living house.
Gotcha.
Um, and of course, the living house, they, they, it has sold recently, but they do plan on keeping, you know, encenders and the farm also open. And I've always noticed that people do, like, go over the coming farms, and they're just like crossing, and so, yeah, it's,
Yeah.
it's not safe. So I didn't know if we could look into having a four-way.
Yeah.
I also have children, and, you know, she has, I, I require my children to walk all the way to the subway to go to the parking, you know, right there. I, like, I have my child with us, but I just, I want to teach him proper, you know, you know, being safe, and so he and I are always required, and I'm like, oh, yeah, but, like, there's no possible here. And if there was, we would, but there's not. So with, with the business there, people are crossing and which is the, it would be an out of the way stuff out there.
We can evaluate that as part of it.
Yeah, I think that some of what she's talking about too is, um, like, people going around, as soon as they cross that white line.
Yeah.
It's, it's a violation and it's an enforcement issue.
Yeah.
So I don't think any amount of, of changing that is gonna change the fact that it needs to be enforced by law.
Right.
Eric, thank you for letting me get a real presentation that took up a lot of what I had prepared.
Oh, great.
Uh, the pictures, you know, showed a clear picture of some of the areas that were in disrepair, and some of those areas have been in disrepair for quite some time. Um, I remember sending a email to the former town manager with concern when he was younger that you can't really put a toddler on the side of the road for reasons that she mentioned. Um, so when you're traveling on the sidewalk and using a bicycle, the training wheels, it has ruts in the areas. And one of the things they kept focusing on was, um, federal compliance during the project. However, um, my concern would be federal compliance after the project is being taken. Um, mainly for ADA compliance. Um, the town has a history of a lot of snowmobiles to travel on sidewalks as recreation. Um, but clearly this funding is for pedestrian travel, and it's been a diagram of updating for, even since I've been a town. There's no place to ride a bike safely for the reasons that she had mentioned. Um, and adhered to a town policy potentially, if there is a federal requirement after the fact or upkeep, that snowmobiles are not allowed to travel up these streets for the very minimal tax and revenue that is created. Because for a course of forty years, that tax revenue has never equa-, uh, equated with not to repair the existing sidewalks to a fashion that's ADA compliant. Especially for, like she said, you know, children with disabilities. Um, there's varying degrees of disabilities for children, you know, ranging from toddlers all the way to high school students. Um, people are hard hearing, so we have to focus walking. And I can attest that in myself with a disability, it has difficulty walking on the sidewalks because they are slanted and they are pinned from scabs on snowmobiles and cleats that tear up the pavement. Um, so my question to you is, is it going to be existing with car pavement? Or is it going to be concrete? Or what's what fashion is it going to be installed in? And is there gonna be additional funding left over for the upkeep past what is already expended for the amount? And will there be federal compliance requirements for the towns to adhere to? So that way it doesn't get destroyed prematurely for recreational purposes such as motor vehicles traveling on the sidewalk?
Sure. So I'll try to appease those questions. So I'll take, I'll take the first one. Um, money, federal money after the project is completed. Typically how it works is you have your engineering dollars, the cost of engineering, the cost of construction. Those are all eligible costs, and that adds up to the total project cost. Whatever is left over typically doesn't go back. We, it goes back to, like, you know, DOT coffers or whatever to, to, uh, this one might be a little different because it's CDS funded. Uh, but in a typical instance, you know, the project cost, the project cost, the town typically has to sign a maintenance agreement to accept the funds, uh, which includes things like snow removal, uh, you know, upkeep, you know, things like that. There are, um.
That is also one of the concerns, even for the snow machines to be able to travel on the sidewalk. Snow is then left behind and then thrown, so there is no pedestrian travel that is going on very much with your ones. Um, many kids that live within less than a one-mile radius cannot take the bus, and some parents can't wear military的衣服 to school at EAM. So there's a benefit that walk or bicycle school. So that's one of the concerns too.
Um, so typically, you know, as this federal funding, as it's, you know, it's for pedestrian improvements, um, you know, all of, I think those other things, you know, the, the non-motorized, the snowmobiles, I think comes out of municipal level probably. Um, but, um, yeah, the, the funding for the project is for pedestrian improvement.
Right, this is, it wasn't a, a multi-use.
Right.
You know, cause there, there are some trail grants and things you'd get for multi-use, or it's a hiking, biking, motorized, shared trail stuff. This isn't it, it's pedestrians, it's ADA, it's a lot of folks, whether it's elderly or children, you know, they're, they're there.
Certainly, you know, in past practice, the, the town has utilized the existing sidewalks. So going forward, once the improvements have been put in place, if we go for a past practice to please or bend the knees to, you know, businesses because it was a source of revenue, however, you know, by allowing that with not the appropriate amount of tax to apply to percaring it, it was to be damaged in the process of allowing the snow machines. Would inconvenience the individuals that are traveling on pedestrians?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think there isn't, um, an intention, I think you mentioned, are we gonna have concrete sidewalks and, again, it's gonna be a cost element? And if I had to spitball, we're probably gonna make these better. I would like to see things matched up, but we'll see what we can do. Cause I don't wanna leave a section that's not improved and then have two hundred feet of beautiful new concrete sidewalk. And Eric and I are always talking ADA, and as an engineer doing his job, he's like, well, you know, you need a five-foot concrete sidewalk.
You need, or passing lanes.
Or passing lanes.
And there's a program that's, that's federal.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they don't discern between pavement and concrete. That is more or less a lot of preference and maintenance thing. And how much you wanna, you know, keep, put concrete sidewalks, you probably don't have to go as far. Whereas paved sidewalks, um, you know, for a town, sometimes they're easier to maintain because they can, you know, patch them and things like that. Um, but, you know, typically asphalt sidewalks or paved sidewalks are cheaper, uh, which allow you to sort of take the project further, uh, you know, within, within the available funding. So, you know, we do evaluate materials as part of the project, and, you know, we'll present the information, you know, these sidewalks cost X, these sidewalks cost Y. Is it more important for concrete or is it more important to go as far as you can with, you know, asphalt and trying to hit as many users along the project, um, as you can?
Well, as you can see, like, pavement, um, is susceptible to frost keeps and it cracks along the sections, whereas concrete is sectional and it allows for expansion and contraction.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know the length of use of each, of material, but it would be nice to have a side-by-side comparison cost-wise, longevity of use. Um, and what would happen if the town decided that they didn't wanna adhere to, you know, ADA compliance and allow snow machines to go down and curb it up there?
You know, salt sometimes will play a factor in whether you wanted the concrete or paved sidewalks. Um, you know, assault over time, if you don't continue to seal it, it's all will, you know, start to, start to break up your sidewalks. So, you know, there are a lot of things to consider, you know, cost, maintenance durability, how far you wanna take the project.
Water sewer.
Water sewer, yeah.
Cause we have old infrastructure here. So let's say, you know, we get a windfall and we got another four million dollars. Great, we're gonna dig up and we're gonna put in concrete. Our current water infrastructure, there's concerns.
Is there more of them that was going out there somewhere?
No, I don't, I don't. But even if, even if it happened, we would incur more costs because of the damaged. So we have to kind of play with kid gloves with some of this infrastructure underneath.
Hi, um, yeah, we talked about biking a little bit, but, yeah, I'm curious, there's a serious consideration for adding infrastructure for bike lanes. Um, I'd say we have a very active bike community here, and there's no, like, connection, but recall, it's not bike control, so you really, you know, on Main Street. Um, and this is also kind of just a comment, I would maybe propose that adding a passing lane wouldn't really make the town safer for pedestrians. I feel like narrowing the road and I'm curious if there are, um, you know, initiatives for the calming traffic, like you were saying. Um, I feel like maybe narrowing the road and doing like a separate bike lane and pedestrian sidewalk really is important, it would actually make the town a lot safer and more durable, um.
Yeah, you find in areas where, you know, speed can be an issue, where if you visually put a, or a barrier right closer to the white line, you know, ten feet is pretty far away, depends about what it is now. And, you know, nine to ten feet is, are these sort of, uh, areas between the white line and the curve. We bring that down four feet, you know, then, then just visually, it, that acts in itself, um, at times with the traffic calming measure.
Yeah, I remember.
But, yeah, so it comes out, it comes out of layout, right? Then it's, so it's, it's what is sort of the priority? Is the priority getting the bikes and the priority getting the parking? Those are questions that, um, you know, the, the community, so I guess the community answers the, answer the questions. You know, what's sort of the priorities of the corridors of maintaining, you know, maintaining the on-street parking where it's available or narrowing the road? Um, you know, when we sort of develop the alternatives, then we get the feedback, um, you know, from you folks, and then I guess proceed with, you know, developing another alternative. And, and so like I said, so it's a process. We'll be back with alternatives, sort of taking the feedback, and, you know, we say, Eric, that's crazy. You know, we're not gonna do that. Um, you know, but we'll have, you know, costs, alternatives, you know, what are the offsets for doing certain things? Um, you know, for, for you folks to consider sort of at the next public meeting.
There's, there's concepts and ideas about redirecting and having bike lanes on secondary streets. So we don't have Main Street becoming the main, cause bikes can legally go on Main Street with traffic currently. Um, there's been some traffic studies done, like a U and H Durham had one. They made everything bike accessible, bike accessible. But as Eric said, when you have parking and bikes, doors open up and people pull in and out, and then people on bikes are forced to make really bad decisions. You know, it's a bad decision. Um, so things like redirecting bike traffic to safer routes with a bike lane. Um, and if that just ends up being paint, cause there are different kind of bikes on it, and then we.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's different methods. There's, you can do share roads, you can do wayfinding signs, you can do, um, things to try to get, you know, bicycles sort of off the main corridor, just to provide access to the corridor without being in route two. Um, you know, so we'll, we'll, they can, we can, um, you know, work on those lanes.
Okay, thanks. Um, I have one more.
Yeah, sure.
Um, I'm curious if you're planning to include a green infrastructure and more green space or trees and make some mini parks along the sidewalk, um, and very stormwater infrastructure could really fit. Um, yeah, and we're, tell us if that's in what comes, okay? Yeah, I, I mean, there's all sorts of, um, re-energ, re-infra.
Sure.
Certain areas.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we'll be required, the project initial land, you know, so it's initial land of the, the intruder, so a lot of showmen are in, we're gonna deal with. You know, there are things, um, you know, drainage wise that, um, we have to deal with. But I think, you know, creating will be, you know, something to consider. You know, whether we consider adding curb bump outs or islands, those are opportunities for additional green space. Um, you know, some, some people don't like curb bump outs, they serve their purpose. Um, but there are some things where when you have that extra available space, you try to limit the length of time when people are in the road, right? So when you have curb bump outs and crosswalks, those are areas where you're taking pavement away and you can make those areas, whether it's green, papers, opportunities for additional plantings. Um, you know, those are important priorities for the project moving forward. There are opportunities to try to incorporate some of that stuff into the project.
Yeah, the bike soil, did you see, Ron?
Yeah, yeah, cause it all directly goes to the intruder.
Right.
If we can, if it's anything that we.
Maybe you can add some curb or something and the water could just get absorbed into the soil and plant.
Yeah.
I'm also curious, sorry, if I, I wish I, if there will be any, um, river access improvements? Like, can you, just in access?
So town would have, that's a good question. Town would have to own the property along the river or get an easement, um.
That would be a totally different project.
It's, we have another project to deal with that.
Okay, great, that's an easy answer.
Yeah, the Tressel Bridge, you know, that parking area. If you're familiar with VIP Tressel Bridge. So there is actually a granite step stairway for easier access down by the Tressel. And there's another grant we have to make that a community trail hub, which will have more parking and some of those pedestrian amenities and, um, access.
A sidewalk too, that would be great, yeah.
Um, ma'am?
Are there any plans on providing seating on the sidewalks, benches?
Like seating, okay, seating.
It could be, it's pedestrian improvements.
Yeah, I mean, that could be, that would be considered a pedestrian improvement. Yeah, I mean, that could be, that would be considered a pedestrian improvement, uh, as part of the project. Uh, there aren't any company plans right now to do anything specific, uh, but if that's a priority where we want to add seating and maybe some areas, um, you know, where you can, you know, relax along the sidewalk, um, you know, we can consider where those areas would be appropriate and there's a space available to do it.
Yeah, it's not just a sidewalk project, it's really more than that and I mean, for the town, for me at least, the safety piece, so crosswalks and better signage and making this as safe as it can be, considering all the traffic we have, uh, which we kind of want businesses in traffic, but we also want to make it as safe as we can. So yes, that could be there.
I understand that scope of this project is on the Main Street when we have the other project in Lancaster, but you mentioned we could also have a relevant street at some point. It was maybe that's already.
Yeah.
Our own inclusion, however, since some of the things we were talking about require coordination between those different sectors of town.
Yeah.
If we can't do a bike lane on Main Street, what if you were saying there could be secondary areas where that is appropriate? To what degree are we able to coordinate between those different areas? Because there's a lot of recreational resources, like the multi-modal area is extremely heavily used. How do you get there, right? So what ability do we have between these different projects to actually coordinate between that bit at all?
Quite a bit, I mean, I'm I'm cognizant of it, Eric is, you know, he's focused on this. We look at the whole big picture, so even coordinating with the US Forest Service on the PBD West project, we coordinate with them, the idea is to make this a more, um, accessible walking, biking accessible community to Main Street in the safest way possible. So I I guess it would be the board, you know, and I, yes, you know, we are gonna have a bike trail that goes to a dead end or or something. So there would be some process.
Right, I would say we do have a bike trail out of that end, or maybe.
I know.
Yeah, um, and and to that point, when you're doing, conducting your engineering studies, um, how do you gather those recreational assets that might not be, uh, you know, unofficially counted maps? For instance, do we have the Mountain Trailhead or do we have the Cross Trail Segments? Do we have multi-modal as a recreational asset, is that something that's on your radar or how do you gap right now? Yeah, so I know, like particularly, I don't want to get too far into the Route Two project, but I know particularly for that project, I pulled up the Cross Trailmap and that project goes to the trail I admit it's, um, next to the parking lot for the Presidential River Trail. Um, you know, so we had that point of access as sort of, um, a place where we want to get to with that project. So we looked at extending that sidewalk past High Street, um, and towards that access to that trailhead. Uh, just as sort of one, uh, example, you know, incorporated, um, trying to incorporate, uh, other access to other recreational facilities um, um, in the community, but there, um, you know, those resources are available, but if there are other resources we should consider, uh, you know, feel free to, I'll have my contact information up here, um, for right now.
And and one of the big, you know, not to get off of Route Two, but one of the highlights for that project besides the sidewalk is going to be, um, a very robust crosswalk from the parking lot to the trails, because you're coming down Route Two, people go kind of fast, too fast, and we need to give them a warning and it's not going to just be a crosswalk and and do a hail mary. It's it's gonna be, you know, a flashing light, push a button, and people will know. Yeah.
Speaking of safety and incorporating flashing lights and whatnot, um, for visibility, it would be great to have something like that near the Edvard Ed School, because right now it's going to have police officers directing traffic. And without construction, it's already dangerous and hazardous enough for parents and children to traverse that particular traffic pattern. And I'm going to assume that one of the things is your study is going to involve the traffic patterns and potentially have to redirect school traffic so that it's safe during construction, not the patterns. That being said, there's already plans in place that the school board is already talking about rerouting and remaking um, traffic pattern changes in their parking lot, probably going to coincide exactly with the project that you're doing. Um, so our concern is parents and traversing the already chaotic school draw, whether or not there's going to be some accommodations made for like extra safety that is going to be real place for students and children of young age that are traveling on bicycles, stuff of that nature.
Like during construction?
During construction, and also afterwards. Like, uh, you had mentioned the flashing lights and the button being pushed to, you know, signify that there's somebody there waiting because traffic just simply does not stop.
Yeah, and and schools are great opportunities to incorporate those rapid rectangular flashing, what they are, the orange side, you press the button right, it signifies that there's somebody across the street. Um, schools and heavily utilized heavily utilized crosswalks, um, are prime areas to incorporate those things. So there are federal highway guidelines on looking at crosswalk functionality, speed, um, and what the recommend, what the recommended treatments are for those areas. Um, you know, and beacons are, as long as there are not too many, because it's like signs, if you put too many signs, it's it could get, you know, flying at a time, but, you know, if you did every one at every crosswalk, that would be too much. But I think if you have a match strategic location like schools, um, you know, heavily utilized crossings, maybe at Subway, I'm not quite sure if that would qualify as or not, but, um, you know, there are those opportunities on the floor to incorporate those treatments. And I think, you know, in the right situations, they are, um, a valuable resource.
Currently, as I said, there's already a school zone with flashing light, but it's kind of offset.
Yeah.
In front of McDonald's and it's almost like not visible even with the flashing light.
Yeah.
So I think the placement is key.
Yeah.
And especially, uh, directly in front of the school, so that way children navigate safely because it's not in the town's budget to have police officer directing traffic to have students safely cross.
Sure. Heard a lot of good comments. I heard you questioned bump outs, and I would like to make a comment about bump outs.
Mm-hmm.
I experienced those biking up and down. They are very dangerous. They thrust the biker out into the traffic lane and I certainly hope we don't use bump outs anymore. I get around town very well with the wide lanes on their side and I don't go down through Main Street with cars in front. I go around Church Street and Bourbon Street and.
Sure.
Yeah, I purposely avoid that area for that reason, because I don't want to be out in the lane with the cars.
Right, right, that makes sense.
So yeah, please don't do bump outs.
Yeah.
Where is the on-street parking currently starting? Way back to that.
Indeed.
It's also changed since he's, uh, done the survey, there's been sign that they've removed.
Let me see if I can recall exactly where it is. Uh, let's see. Where is?
Is it part of Church Street there?
So, yeah, so all this area is more or less on-street parking. Um.
Can we get to around?
And where, yeah, where's the McDonald's?
Isn't that Dublin Street down at the school?
Dublin Street is here, Union Street, yeah, there there's Dublin McDonald's, I know where that one is. Uh, I think McDonald's is right, I think it's that. That's McDonald's there, that's the, um, White Mountain Cafe. I believe this area is currently signed, correct?
Correct.
Um, and then.
Where is that little restaurant? The Paw House.
Yeah, there's the Paw House there, yeah. Yeah, so I know that there's cars, sometimes parked.
For both sides, no?
Both sides, right, in in that area there, um. So we can evaluate, you know, if more or less no parking is appropriate to try to help facilitate some of these areas.
We we just thought about that and we're cognizant of the business needs.
Yeah.
The across the McDonald's area, right now it doesn't make sense to have maybe why can't we let people park there? One thought was people then run across the street to McDonald's. Um, but the other part is if that lot was ever developed.
Sure.
Um, it might impact, because it's an entrance, right now it's nothing, but then for visual safety. So if that lot became a parking lot or depending what that became, then we could adjust the parking there.
Yeah, yeah.
But yeah, so it's on our minds. You really need a municipal garage.
Yeah, there you go.
It's another project.
Parking garage?
No, just kidding. No, this guy.
You know, the traffic study done, as far as, is does that also include count, I wanted to count pedestrian use of the crosswalks? And, you know, I mean, diocese depending on when that is done. It's also so many events on the town common.
Right.
Right, um, right, was that taken into consideration? Yeah, you know, there there are, you know, there are locations that need to be considered, just, you know, their location physically. Um, usually we don't want to create a right intern conflict and people are looking left and see traffic is coming. Uh, so location wise, you know, we have a lot to evaluate, you know, their placement regardless of use, um, if it's appropriate. Um, and we do, you know, we I we do kind of know where the heavier used ones are, we haven't done a specific uh, count, daily count pedestrian, uh, uh, crossing on each one, it's something we can consider doing. Um, probably that that study.
I trust that the board knows which ones are being used, it would just be if a robot came in and counted on Tuesday, you know,
not Thursday, with the foreign town market and, you know, we have all those events, it would be not accurate. Yes.
Especially, I'll put a very specific vote in for improved pedestrian safety on the subway to or on common crosswalks, because of the major, uh, bridge or truck barriers, entire area.
You know, that that is one, and I mentioned, you know, treatments where, you know, beacons might be appropriate at heavier, you know, crossings. That might be a location where that or something more substantial, um, you know, is a, you know, is a recognized approach. But that one is one that we have our eyes on, the subway one specifically. Um, because I know like when I build a common, try to go subway, you go back, it's it can be busy and it's tough to see, it's tough to see people. At that location. And so, you know, lighting, lighting is something that we're gonna have to consider across some of the crosswalks. People may have lighting on one side, some may have lighting all, um. You know, if we're spending federal money to improve crossings, we have to meet their requirements. And lighting is a consideration that comes along with with, uh, you know, that comes along with those improvements. Uh, these are all kind of formulations together of what are proposed approaches, uh, for these crossings.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to because I found out, I think, um, something that we talked about previously, so, um, you already mentioned the crosswalks are not going to be done for many years, is that fair enough for you?
Yeah, yeah, these are pedestrian.
So is there any way you can affect it, the snow machines and stuff going on there, or actually not affect it?
I mean, that's something the board can, like the parking signs, you know, with our current ordinances, if we need to new a new ordinance or change, you know, that's something the board, um, will work with.
Okay, and so we're gonna go through this whole process and and, you know, fix that issue and that process is gonna also happen.
Oh, yeah, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Okay.
It did, it's been a written, uh, comment as well.
Yeah.
Um, that they it's not permitted, um, I'm probably putting the cart right first, but kind of trying to get a visual of how when the construction is going on, how the traffic is going to be diverted, if it flows down, like maybe a shoulder and then have traffic travel this way, um, or how is the way to work out where it's going to be the whole length of the Main Street? Like what citizens would expect traveling more, especially during.
Sure.
How you would love it.
Yeah, so without getting too far ahead of myself, um, I'll try to answer the question, um. So the way I've seen projects tackled is in stages, right? So I don't think, if I'm, you know, if I'm a contractor constructing the project, I don't want to have to maintain access from a very long stretch, right, of of, uh, of area that, let's say I go through and I rip up all the sidewalks and I got, you know, two thousand feet of, you know, access to businesses I need to provide, you know, signs and cones and things like that that I need to maintain. So the way that I would see this sort of progresses in stages and on sides of the road. So let's say, you know, let's say I want to do Church to School. I don't see it happening on both sides at the same time. I see it happening on one side, traffic gets diverted to, you know, the road is wide enough where you could probably close half of the lane and do, um, you know, flag two-way traffic or maybe one-way alternating traffic. But during off-world hours, you know, two-way traffic is maintained.
I assume it's good, the areas where there is parking, you know, parking during a temporary period.
Yeah, you know, there'll be there'll be sort of a moving barricade, right? And, you know, you obviously, if there's equipment in the parking area that's staging that area, you're not gonna be able to utilize those areas without the parking, but as part of the design that goes before it goes out to bid, there's detailed traffic control plans that have to get developed. Um, that's sort of, as I mentioned, like there's a bunch of cutout requirements, and one of them is uh, a detailed traffic control plan, which not only addresses motorized traffic, but not pedestrians. Now, how are pedestrians going to be accommodated through the work zones during construction? How are they going to get people in and on these safely? Um, so all of those things sort of get addressed throughout the design process, um, and that all gets reviewed and approved, um, you know, through DOT, federal highway authority, we put it out to bid. There are, um, processes in place to not only look at your design, but how your construction is going to impact the area for the duration, so.
Thank you.
Well. Uh, here we, yes, sure.
I have a critical question, considering it's already considered, but I spend a lot of time on sidewalks. And we're all here to talk about vision. One thing that's becoming more apparent every year is that a lot of the flowering branches which did town ban decades ago is iconic, they're they're rather deadly die. So from a exact point of view, it's going to be what done on Main Street, uh, that should probably is going to have to be addressed just because none of them is, um, um, not understood at, it's sadly, uh, it it's something that does extend to some of larger trees, for example, down by down by, uh, uh, somewhere, some of these big apple trees, uh, have very large dead branches overhanging inside.
Mm-hmm.
And this is an issue that I imagine is probably true to go all the way along Main Street around six inches or so. But that potentially could be made use of as a sustainable interest. So is that something way too far away from the actual sidewalk, from close to school?
Um, I mean, I have a picture here, kind of up by the common, where I think it's kind of the exact opposite of what you're talking about. The tree is way too close to the sidewalk, right? So if we're going digging here, we're probably into the roots of this trees, uh, into this tree, uh, which would impact, you know, which would likely impact it, um, and then you can see like the next tree down is a little bit further away, but, um, you know, I think throughout the common area, the these are gonna need to be a consideration of what we do with these trees. Um, I'm not saying cut them down, I'm not saying come down, um, but, you know, whether it's pruning them, um, or. Um, I'm not saying cut them down, I'm not saying cut them down, um, but, you know, whether it's pruning them, um, or, you know, looking for a spot relocate a sidewalk or some, you know, some other, uh, means to deal with, you know, to deal with these trees, because they're, uh, right along the sidewalk. And this tree is paved on roots, so, you know, that, you can see the damage to the sidewalk that that tree is doing to the, you know, from the roots of the tree. Um, so yeah, trees are gonna be.
Will be considered.
Will be considered, yes, will be considered.
Well, excellent, um, we're a little bit over an hour, which is great feedback, um, I appreciate everybody showing up, this isn't the first show. Um, there'll be more when we get these ideas, we'll take your input. Um, Ms. King pointed out, uh, a written piece, which was great, if you have that moment like I do where you say, oh, I wish I would have said that or asked that, please do that, email me, email Eric, one or other, both, it's all good, all goes the same place and, um, we'll take all these in as we're developing.
Um, the reason that I didn't write this, like, I would benefit the towns like, uh, who was it, Facebook site? Maybe posting something for open communication on that if people weren't able to attend this thing, as a public announcement.
Yeah, um, and this will be posted live too, if other people, you know, the dialogue is excellent, um, people have ideas, you know, we mentioned, you know, we're not intending to cut down all the trees.
Right.
If, if, you know, but other people might have different thoughts, listen to this, watch it at one and a half speed even if you want to and let us know, give us input, we're open. Thank you, everyone. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Eric, thanks.
Thank you, thank you for, um, so.
Thank you.